Record this for MCAT, so if you take a seat at the table behind me and make sure you're talking to your microphone. Many of you are, I think none of you are strangers to the microphone.
Thanks, Jason. Thanks, everyone, for coming. Before we get started and as the current candidates proceed forward to the front of the room, I have a letter here dated today from Cynthia Wolken, who is a current candidate for Ward Two. It's basically her official letter saying that due to a family illness in St. Louis, she is going to withdraw from her candidacy. I have some extra copies here if someone would like to purview the letter. And again, my thoughts, and I imagine everyone in this room would go with her, to her mother, and it is important that she's with her right now. So, did you have that, if anyone wants extra copies? Okay, everyone's sat down. Are you guys liking your seats up there? Okay. Anyway, I'll tell you a little bit about the forum that we're going to start here. Each of you will have three minutes to give an opening statement about yourselves. If you could please keep it to three minutes, that'd be much appreciated. Ellie here is the timekeeper. We have two colored folders. One is green, and it lets you know that you have about 30 seconds to finish. The red one means "time to stop." And I'm hoping we never use that one, but in my experience, we may have to. All right. While the candidates are discussing who they are and why they think they would be the best fit for that seat that they're in currently, there's going to be pieces of paper and pens going around the audience, and if you would be so kind as to think of some type of question that you would like asked of the candidates, that would be wonderful. Please note on the top of the sheet of paper that this is a question for this specific candidate or candidates, or even just the ward. The responses, candidates should be about two minutes to those questions, so maybe not any long-winded questions from the audiences. And then after that, we'll go through an endorsement process, which I think I'll stop there, and we'll talk about that when we're done with everything. So without further ado, we will start with Ms. Kathy Greathouse. Please tell us about yourself. You're welcome.
Hi, my name is Kathy Greathouse. My husband, my brother-in-law, and myself, we have a small construction business in Missoula. We own a small home in Ward Six, and we did build a duplex on our lot. It's our retirement. I was 2008 Builder of the Year for the Missoula Building Industry Association, and I'm also a board member of that association. I'm a board member with ADAP, which is the Area Development and Preservation Team. I have joined the Franklin to the Fort Leadership Team as a co-chair. I am the mother of eight. I have one left at home. I have four grandchildren. My child at home, he's almost 12. He'll be 12 next month, and he's going to 7th grade at CS Porter. And I understand the issues that the schools have as far as funding. I'm very active with the school and very active with my son. And that's pretty much all I have to say.
My name is Ryan Morton. I was adopted at birth into Missoula by some generous parents, Jack and Nancy Morton. I grew up in the Rattlesnake. It's my home now, and most of my friends and family live in the Rattlesnake or the North Side. So I definitely have a large emotional attachment to the area. I have a bachelor's degree in economics, which my emphasis was on energy demand in Montana, as well as environmental and development economics. And I have coursework completed and my master's degree in communication studies, where I focused on identity politics, particularly for marginalized identities, queer theory, and racial theory as well. Marquesa is probably my strongest intellectual influence, and my career has spanned from being a rate analyst economist at the Public Service Commission to teaching English as a second language in five different countries, and now at the Missoula Building Industry Association as their Government Affairs Director. I also enjoy the outdoors and open space. I ski, hike, float, camp, all those sorts of things. I grew up in the outdoors and feel quite comfortable there. In terms of my platform and why I'm running, I could summarize it as basically business development within a community context. And I have three basic items that I want to chat with you about, and I'm going to try to keep under three minutes, I promise, Ellie. The first one is a local public insurance option. This would be to utilize the current self-insurance pool that the city has, and to spread the risk and spread the pool for the program out to a larger group of people, because as those of you familiar with insurance, it's about spreading risk. And the larger the group of people you have within a pool, the more normal the risk is dispersed, and usually premiums go down. And I think this would boost preventative and primary care in Missoula, especially for the people in Missoula that are under or uninsured. And healthcare is also one of the largest private sector industries in Missoula. So again, it's about business development, but within a community context. This is one of our strongest industries, but we have special needs in Missoula. The next item, am I on the green one yet?
Green.
Oh, good gosh. Is green building and development, which I have a unique experience with at the Missoula Building Industry Association. I'd like to see public buildings be green, credits to certified homes, and promote neighborhood commercial zoning to reduce car travel, because there's plenty of neighborhoods that have to travel very far just to get milk. And again, construction and development are one of the largest private sector industries. So again, this is about business development with a community context. And the last item is to restructure the sewer utility, and I'd like to create a universal service fund, look at establishing a right-of-way tax for, I'm looking at you, Ellie, don't worry, and to keep a arms' length of separation from the general fund. And I'll wrap it up there, because that's the red folder. Thank you.
I'm John Wilkins, and I just give a brief history of myself. I was born in Great Falls, Montana. I was in St. Thomas Orphanage until I was four years old. I was adopted to some people in Minnesota, and at 14, I knew I was a Montanan. I ran away and came back, and I've been here ever since. I have a son that has just turned 30, just got married, and a daughter that's going to be 21 in August. I first, when I first moved to Missoula, I lived in the Lower Rattlesnake on Jackson Street. Then I went up on the hill on 55th and 23rd, in that big duplex on the corner there. And then I finally bought our first house at 411 Livingston. 22 years later, after working construction all that time, I was in an accident, lost a leg, and knew I needed one-floor living. So two blocks away, I stumbled into a house, and I bought it on 501 Fairview. And it's one-floor living, and I'm getting along pretty well there. Four years ago, I ran for city council. I did that seeing what was happening in my neighborhood. The Lewis and Clark neighborhood and Ward Four are great places to live, just along with other places in Missoula. But I could see changes coming on the horizon that didn't really fit with Ward Four and its way of life. And I feel strongly that what Ward Four represents and the single-family housing that represents there are something that we should keep in Missoula. I'm not against small-lot development, but I think there's a place for it. I'm not against affordable housing. There's definitely a place for it, but we let some of the planned neighborhood clusters into our neighborhood. And right now, in the paper, on the 300 block of Dearborn, one of them is going for $299,000. And that, to me, is not affordable housing. I would also like to see us put as much emphasis as we do in affordable housing to good wages in Missoula, and maybe more people can find houses. So let's start putting our efforts to bring in more businesses into Missoula that'll pay affordable-type wages. I think that is just as important for our working people, that if they get a good affordable wage, they might be able to afford to buy some of our houses. I believe in the step-up, Siri. You start little, you get bigger, and that's what I did in my life, and I think that's very important. There's a lot of other issues I can get into, but it's kind of hard to right now. I also spent 10 years in the Army. I ran Boy Scouts and Cub Scouts at Lewis and Clark School. I was involved in helping youths that were in trouble through the courts. I run Little League. I run American Legion. I started our neighborhood council up. I was one of the founding fathers of the neighborhood councils when they first started up in Missoula. I'm very proud of that. Thank you.
My name is Bob Jaffe. I'll be very brief. So I grew up in New York. I moved out to Missoula about 20 years ago, and I'm married, have three boys. And for my day job, run a computer software business downtown. And got involved in civic issues with, I used to live over on the West Side, and kind of stumbled upon Project Playground when that was going on, and got pretty excited about the whole idea of getting involved in the community. And got involved with the North Missoula Community Development Corporation and the neighborhood councils when they were starting up. Moved in 2001 to our current home on South Second Street in Ward Three. And when the city council seat opened up four years ago, when Lou Ann Crowley ran for mayor, it seemed like a good opportunity for continuing my work with being civically involved and contributing to the community and being able to make a difference by being on council. So the experience on council has been, I think it's been terrific. I enjoy the deliberation and the considering of the difficult issues, and I particularly enjoy communicating with my constituency and trying to create a bridge of information, mainly through a listserv that I've been managing, promoting weekly updates on council's business, because it seemed at that time there was a real lack of information available for people who wanted to follow the council's business. We have our MCAT system for folks that are really into it. And then, you know, the Missoulian on the lighter end, and there wasn't really anything in the middle. So that's been an ongoing effort of mine, try to provide that connection for folks. And some of my issues are really working as a team player with the council, trying to make sure we function well and do the city's business. I'm very interested in promoting opportunities for affordable housing and for alternative transportation, so bike and pedestrian and transit. And in any case, I enjoy the work, and I'd like to continue for another term. Thanks.
Hi, my name is Mike O'Heron, and it's great to be here tonight. Thanks, everybody. Thanks for everybody who is serving in public office and the people that have done so in the past, and good luck to candidates that are running for office. I'm really excited and inspired to serve as a member of the city council. I love Missoula, and I think we're living in very interesting times, very challenging times, in public-sector problem-solving, decision-making. I do a lot of thinking and brainstorming with friends and family members about how things can be better and what I'd do if I could make a difference or make the decision. And I decided to step up and try to win a seat on the council so that I could take a turn and make a contribution in that respect, as far as helping with the public sector. And I really love the neighborhood we live in. We live on South Reserve Street, which is the block that Meadow Hill School is on. We have wonderful neighbors, and with the school right across the street, we have an outstanding view of the mountains, because it's an open space, a very large schoolyard, and it's just an excellent place to live, a beautiful block, and, like I said, wonderful neighbors. So I really enjoy where we live. People who propose solutions fascinate me, and people who are positive about working through problems and trying to find that middle ground or a solution that'll work for all or most people are just really, really interesting to me. And Ryan mentioned someone that was an influence. Recently, I was reading Tom Friedman, and he's got a couple of, interesting person. I don't even know what he is as far as political persuasion, but I kind of don't care either. He's really into problem-solving, and the book he wrote, the most recent one, was really fascinating to me. And a lot of the topics he covers are things like green building and a green economy and doing things green that are not necessarily more costly, in fact, leading the world in green technologies. And it's just something that's fascinating to me, because it's someone who's proposing solutions, and I like that a lot. One of the things I think we should do at all levels of public-sector decision-making and problem-solving is use web technology more effectively for brainstorming, so that citizens can jump on the web and go to a real simple page and just propose solutions, and stay out of the bickering and name-calling, and just say, "Here's something that might work," and just get lots of people brainstorming, so that the decision-makers can have a real good feel for all the various opinions out there. And there's different web technologies now that are really set up for this, and I wish we could make more use of that. The three things I'm thinking a lot about as far as issues for our ward are traffic, the local economy, and having a thrifty, solution-oriented government. Traffic is a big deal in Ward Five. If you think about Miller Creek, there's been a lot of talk about a bridge and things like that, but there's not going to be a bridge, to my knowledge, and we need to look at other reality-based solutions for traffic in Ward Five. For the local economy, I support a strong local economy that generates jobs and that recycles money locally. And for a thrifty, solution-oriented government, I don't think we have a lot of waste in our city government, but I think we have a lot of conservative people and older folks in Ward Five, and they're really concerned about things like taxes and being really thrifty with our government, and that's one of the things I'll be looking at as a city council member. Thanks a lot.
My name's Marilyn Marler. I'm currently serving as the ward representative for Ward Six. It's been a really positive experience, and it's been another way that I could be involved in serving Missoula. I've lived here for 15 years. I'm married. My husband is a fisheries biologist for Fish, Wildlife, and Parks. I am a botanist. My day job, my non-city council job, is working as the Natural Areas Manager for the University of Montana, taking care of noxious weeds and native plant restoration and various stewardship, which involves a lot of community outreach and education, problem-solving, dealing with unhappy folks on various open-space issues. But I enjoy that. I enjoy the problem-solving. And my husband and I bought our first house ever in the Number Streets on 8th Street, and we really just fell for the neighborhood. We liked it a lot, and we started getting involved at the community forum level or neighborhood council level, just because of simple things that we noticed that the neighborhood needed. There's not a lot of sidewalks, traffic, infrastructure is not very good. We have fewer parks for our families in that part of town, and I've worked hard to try to get some attention from the city to those issues. My husband and I also own a small business together, Butterfly Properties LLC. It's a property management company. We manage a few rentals and own a few rentals, all in Ward Six, because we like it and we're trying to reinvest into our neighborhood, and we emphasize sustainable living for renters. We encourage them to garden, and we make the homes energy-efficient, et cetera. I would really like the opportunity to continue to serve on city council, and I thank you all for the opportunity to come here and talk to you tonight.
Hi, I'm Dave Strohmeyer. I currently represent Ward One on the Missoula City Council. I live downtown, just down the street here on East Pine Street. My wife, Gretchen, is a bereavement counselor with hospice. I have two beautiful little children, a two-year-old girl, a five-year-old boy. And contrary to rumors, this is not a toupee. But anyway, basically, I'm running for city council for the same reasons that I ran four years ago, and I think that boils down to the notion of citizenship. This community of Missoula has given a great deal to me over the years that I've lived here. It's become a part of my personal narrative, and it's a place that I want to be able to give back to. Prior to joining the Missoula City Council, I served as a board member and eventually president of the Historic Eastside Neighborhood Association, and city council seemed to be a great opportunity to ensure that the quality of life that we enjoy here today is something that we maintain and bestow to our children and to our children's children. But in addition, over this three-and-a-half-year stint so far, I've had the opportunity to participate in a number of different planning initiatives that I feel that we're on the cusp of implementing, and I'd like to be a part of that implementation strategy. We went through the Urban Fringe Development Area Initiative, which formed a solid groundwork of data for planning the future of Missoula. We're currently in the process, or will be soon, of considering the adoption of a master plan for downtown Missoula, critical to this community. We are in the process of updating and overhauling our antiquated zoning ordinance and subdivision regulations, and after many years of struggle, we finally were able to fund this year the development of a conservation lands management plan for Missoula, which is a great thing for our open-spaced lands. Near and dear to my heart is one initiative that I think is emblematic of my thoughts about local government, and that is the need to not merely look in myopically on ourselves as a community, but look outward to the region and the nation. And to that end, I've been a vocal advocate for restoration of passenger rail service through southern Montana, restoring the north coast Hiawatha to Missoula and to the region, and I intend to do what I can as an elected official to see that happen in the next four years. At the end of the day, I think local government and serving as a local elected official means more than fixing potholes or even providing emergency services. It means, in my mind, knitting together those elements of community that enrich the human soul and also sustain the natural world. And for those reasons, I would certainly welcome your endorsement and look forward to serving another four years on city council.
Hello, my name's Roy Hausman, candidate for Ward Two. I grew up in Great Falls, Montana. Moved over here in 1999 to attend the university. I got a degree in English Leadership and Psychology in 2003. During the summers, I would work up in Ketchikan, Alaska, to make a living, to come down here and afford to go to school and not have to work full-time also. And after I graduated in 2003, I went up to Alaska for one more summer, came back down and said, "All right, this is where I want to be." And I worked at a youth home for about a year and a half here in town, and all the while, trying to apply for a job that made more than 10 bucks an hour. And as anyone knows, around our age group, which I'm about 28, that can be a little difficult here in Missoula. And luckily, in 2005, I got on at Smurfette Stone Container. It's a good, middle-class job, great opportunity, healthcare benefits, and it was an old, traditional job, where it was an extractive industry where Montana used to be. And as Montana transitions from that, and Missoula transitions from that, from not just an extractive industry town to a tourist town, a university town, and part of that has to play into is having a diverse economy, and that's where I feel very strongly I can help pursue that, pursue a diverse working economy that is not just a place for summer homes and tourist places, but a place for families that can have an affordable home and have a job that can make the mortgage payment. And along with that, though, that doesn't mean that you have to sacrifice a lot of the things that Missoulians really care for, such as bike lanes or trail systems. Those items are critically important, and they, I believe, in the long term will reduce costs for the city. I think that city council is a great opportunity to not just further economic development, but also further a community sense of well-being. And I think that as your councilman for, or potential councilman for Ward Two, I think that it'd be a great opportunity, because we are, well, Ward Two is a very large and diverse ward. We go from the West Side all the way up to Grant Creek, all the way west, getting close to the airport now. We are a growing community, and how best we serve that is to make sure that we have progressive, smart growth. Thank you.
Thank you, candidates. We very much appreciate that. I'll try that again. Thank you, candidates. We very much appreciate your time and your words. Are there any questions from the audience? I believe Emily Brock could go around and pick some up. I think candidates would be very helpful when you are asked these questions if you would continually state your name and possibly the ward that you are running for. And then after we're done with these questions, before the endorsement process, we'll go back around, and everyone can say their names, and whether or not they are seeking an endorsement from this body tonight. All right, Mr. Morton, this question is for you. How will you encourage Missoulians to use their cars less?
Ryan Morton, Ward One, and I'm not seeking an endorsement, but I am happy to answer that question. I think, first of all, my first answer was to zone commercial in more residential neighborhoods, because that's a primary cause for traveling one way or the other. And I think many of our neighborhoods suffer, because any commercial possibility is several miles away and may not be feasible for biking, and they may or may not have bus service. So I think having commercial close to home is an important local government act that we can do to reduce transportation needs by vehicle. I'm also a big supporter of completing the trail system through fair subdivision rules and public dollars. I think I wrote that in my written response, and you can look for more of that there. And in terms of transit, my understanding of the census data is that there's not a growing need for transit. If behavior changed in the future, I would be happy to support that, but at this time, I'm happy to maintain but not expand transit.
Thank you, Mr. Morton. This next question is for Roy Hausman. As a city council member, how would you influence higher wages in Missoula?
I feel that some of the ways that you can influence higher wages is providing economic opportunities for businesses to move in through either tax incentives or ability to encourage, well, some of the clean and green energy development that's currently being really pushed with, you know, the upcoming bill that just passed, the House of Congress, ACES, American Clean Energy and Securities Act, which I was over in DC lobbying for less than a month ago. Those type of initiatives, there'll be a lot of public funds made available, and it will be up to the Missoulians and city council to help encourage those funds and development to come to this city. So I think that'd be one great way.
Thank you, Roy. Mr. O'Heron? Apologies. As a city council member, how will you influence local buying?
How do I what?
Influence local buying, local economy? I did not write this question. I'm assuming that's what they're talking about, maybe buying locally?
Okay. My name is Mike O'Heron. I'm a candidate for city council in Ward Five in Missoula. And I'm not quite sure I understand the question, but it sounds like it has to do with my passion for the local economy as far as increasing local people spending money in local businesses. Is that what we're?
Well, if the individual out of the audience wants to speak more to that question, they sure could. Sally, is your question?
That's it. We talked about growing the local economy, I believe, and the question is, one of the best ways to grow a local economy is to spend the money locally. So, as a city councilperson with this view, how would you do it?
Okay. It's a great question, and I would start with a brainstorming process, like I mentioned earlier, and get people really thinking and talking about it. And first of all, making people aware of how keeping money locally benefits the community, so that people understand and they have a reason to even do it to begin with. So as much as I could, I'd have an information campaign, to the extent that it was feasible, let people know that by spending money locally, you're supporting a local family or families, and that they are going to respend money in the community, such that they continue to create jobs and keep the money here recycling. An information campaign and a brainstorming session, I think, would be the way I'd start. And then find out from business owners what the incentives and disincentives are for people coming into their stores or businesses or shops, what causes people to go out of town to spend money, whether it's price or lack of awareness of local businesses having products or services here in the community that can be accessed just as easily as out-of-town or out-of-state products and services. So more information and more brainstorming on the parts of the, both the purchasing public and business owners. I'd start there, and then gather the best ideas and try to move forward. I'd also have the mayor talk more about it, and try to capture a piece of the Missoulian on the front page, and every week say, "There's a good reason to spend money locally," and let the mayor be one of our leaders that talks about our local economy and what it means to the local area.
Thank you. Ms. Greathouse, this one is for you. What role does the city council play in school funding or management school location?
Kathy Greathouse, and I'm a candidate for Ward Six. The local government, we depend on state funds right now, but the school has also asked parents to see if we could chip in. I have a gifted son, and for gifted ed, anything that we do, we have to pretty much come up with the funding. with the funding for. I'm not sure how much the local government at this time could do. I would like to see some workshops and see if we couldn't come up with ways to raise money to assist the schools. It's the, it's not going to be easy, but I don't agree necessarily with the fundraising that the schools try to do now when they send products out for kids to sell. I think we should try and find other ways to help support the schools.
Thank you. And as a mother, I appreciate your response to that. Marilyn, this question is for you. What do you do on the council that you really like?
I like almost everything about being on council. I guess I'll just limit it to one thing. I really like chairing the conservation committee. I really like hearing about stewardship issues that we can do a better job in being stewards of lands that we have, and I see Jackie Corday is here. I'm really happy that we passed another open space bond while I was on city council so that we can talk about the best ways to spend that money to make sure that there's more open space. I get really excited when people come in, like we just had at last night's city council meeting, citizens come in with projects that they work on very successfully. The example I'm thinking of is Jeff Stevens and the Tonkin Trail Project. It just got me all excited. He does so much work, and I'm lucky to be able to chair the conservation committee where I get to see so much of that, which I love, and am able to participate via city council to do that. I'll wrap it up by saying that I, another thing that I like is just helping people solve problems. Conservation and stewardship is my professional area of expertise. I don't know very much about the sewer, but sometimes people call me with problems about the sewer, and I enjoy trying to problem-solve with that and just being the person who helps the constituent get the information that they need and help work them through that process.
Thank you, Marilyn.
I'm sorry, I forgot to say that I am seeking the endorsement. Thanks, and I'm running for Ward Six.
Thank you. Mr. O'Heron, you're very popular, so I have two questions here for you that are tied together, and in my opinion, we could allow you four minutes to answer them. I hope that is okay. Let me just get through them. The zoning update. Overall, do you support or oppose the current proposal and why? And then the second question says, what is your opinion of the three current city council members suing the city over the proposed zoning ordinance? So I, four minutes again?
Okay. Again, I'm Mike O'Heron, candidate for city council in Ward Five. I didn't mention also that I'm not formally seeking the endorsement, but I would appreciate it if I get it. I'm trying to continue to maintain an independent status, so I hope that's clear. I support the zoning update. It seems like the process was fair and involved the public, very inviting to public input. A lot of very smart people deliberated about it and tried to completely deconstruct the problems and issues and the complications that it took to assemble the new number 20. And as far as the council members that are suing the city, I don't think it's a good idea to sue your employer, for one. I will actually make a commitment, if I'm elected, that I will not sue the city of Missoula for the first term, for the first four years, and try to honor that as best I can. I'm not sure of the motivations, and I'm sure that it'll come out eventually if they continue the lawsuit, and it's, you know, this is American. If they have standing in court and they want to sue whatever entity they want to sue, that's their right as American citizens, and it just, it seems a little odd to me that someone would sue their employer.
Thank you. That was wonderful. I believe that was under two minutes even, so there we go. This question is for four different candidates, Ryan Morton, Kathy Greathouse, Mike O'Heron, and Roy Hausman. In 2007, city council voted to require a riverfront trail as a condition of approval for Clark Fork Terrace subdivision over the subdivision objections, so it must be, oh, the subdividers' objections. Do you agree with council's actions or the subdividers' objections? And I believe if that is a little unclear, we can call for clarification of the question. And since there's four different individuals, this is addressed to, again, we'll try to keep it under two minutes for each response. Do we need clarification of the question?
I do.
Does the individual who wished to ask this question want to clarify this a little bit? There is some vagueness if you're not familiar with this action in 2007.
You won't be able to hear it, anyway. Clark Fork Terrace, number two, was a subdivision approved by the city council in the summer of 2007. One of the conditions of approval asked for by the Parks Department was a riverfront trail that would help us complete the connection out to the Milltown Dam. Subdivider did not want to place the trail along the riverfront. City council voted six to six to require the trail as a condition of approval. The mayor broke the tie in favor of the trail, and it's currently in litigation. I think it speaks to an issue of how you balance the subdividers' expressed preferences and the public interest in access to things like riverfronts.
Again, that was Ryan Morton, Kathy Greathouse, Mike O'Heron, Roy Hausman. Anyone particularly want to go first? I see Ryan, there you go.
Ready to go. Ryan Morton, Ward One, candidate, and I'm not seeking an endorsement, but I love the questions. I think the court was correct in suggesting that you did not properly provide the facts necessary for the settlement, and I think part of that has to do, and I blogged about this, had to do with some of the vagueness in terms of may or may not in your regulations. So I think if you just rely on the rhetoric of your regulations and some generalizations about health and human welfare, you get yourself into trouble. And as I've consistently argued on behalf of the MBIA, is that the conditions need to be substantiated with fact, and what the court is now doing is having an evidentiary hearing, and I think that's the right action to take. Preferably, they shouldn't have to go to litigation, but that's something that's, you know, it happens. So I disagree with what happened. I think you needed more facts as a city council, and I believe the evidentiary hearing will achieve that, and I would rather see some changes in the regulations and in basic procedure when we are creating conditions from staff, because oftentimes you can say you have conditions, but you don't have the factual basis, and I think you need, the city council needs to make sure that those facts are adequately provided, not just rhetoric about regulations and public health, safety, and welfare.
Thank you, Mr. Morton. Kathy, Mike, or Roy? Kathy?
Kathy Greathouse, I'm running for Ward Six. I'm not seeking endorsement because it is nonpartisan. I am not familiar enough to make a judgment call on this. I did not follow this, and I would hate to make a statement without all my facts. I would definitely look at it if somebody wants to talk to me later about it, but until I know, you know, all the issue involved with this, I'd rather not make any statements.
Thank you, Kathy. Roy or Mike?
My name's Mike O'Heron, and I also don't know a lot about the case in general. I really appreciate access to the river, but without knowing the facts of the decision, it'd be, I feel like I wouldn't know enough to be able to really make an informed comment about it. But again, if someone else, just like Kathy said, if someone wanted to know how I'd feel about it, if I knew more about it, I'd be glad to study up on it and give a response later. Thanks.
Thank you, Roy.
Heck, yeah, I want a trail. Let's just talk about that. That's where we want to be, is we're going to have a trail system that could potentially extend all the way to Milltown and connect to a wonderful, great state park of a former superfund site. To have a trail, yeah, I think that's pretty important, and if the city needs to make a better argument, that's one thing. I think a lot of the question has to stand is, what's the best for the community? And the community needs some public access, and public access has to do with, you know, well, stream setbacks maybe, or, you know, public construction along your development so that you can have access not just for roads, but for bike and pedestrian access. And when you've got an area that will potentially grow, well, exponentially, with a brand-new state park over in the area potentially, and the Bonner Site, obviously looking at redevelopment as in a changing community out there, you're going to need that public access, and you don't want to have just an interstate and an over-traffic highway. You need to have access, and I think it's the right thing to do for the city to make sure that you have that access throughout the community, and it doesn't just extend through the downtown area. And with that, I'm curious, Ryan, did you actually support or oppose the trail?
I believe I opposed the council decision and support the court's ordering of an evidentiary hearing to collect more facts.
Thank you, candidates. I have two questions here, and due to time considerations, and we do have some more excellent questions, I'm going to combine them again. It's a question for all candidates. If elected, what is one thing you would advocate the city council do to address the high cost of housing? The other question is, if elected, how will you bring more jobs to Missoula? So I do believe those are related, and maybe we'll start with Roy, and we can go around the table. We have, you have two minutes. The questions again are, if elected, what is one thing you would advocate the city council do to address the high cost of housing? So high cost of housing, and how would you bring more jobs to Missoula?
With the high cost of housing, obviously, it's a very contentious issue, and it needs to be addressed. Obviously, if you can slightly increase the density of the city itself, you allow for some sort of, well, you allow for more availability of housing in the city. You know, it's interesting because it wasn't that long ago that people were buying houses here, and I talked to them every day out at the mill, you know, that they bought their houses for $40,000, and we just, you know, a similar house, that, style of house that we just bought, my wife and I, in October, was $190,000, and that's considered affordable. And I just don't think that that's quite doable on the wages that we make here. And obviously, we need to set stringent rules on development so that we have access to affordable housing and make sure that everyone pays their fair share so that everyone can live here in Missoula. With the jobs access, I think that coming from, coming from also a union background, there's two aspects behind it. If you build locally with Davis Bacon Lages and, you know, union wages, you inherently increase the value of the community itself. There's no sense bringing in a bunch of outside contractors to do a bunch of housing developments or building construction. When you, if you spend the money locally and you hire people locally, they're going to spend that money locally. Same with product. If you actually have product that's made in the USA and built in the USA, you not only further economic development within your own community, but throughout the rest of the country. And so as to jobs, if you buy locally and continue to buy locally, not just at a farmer's market, but in every product you buy, you will further economic development in this country and in Missoula.
Dave Strohmeier, Ward One, city council man. One answer that I think will kill a couple birds with one stone would be in terms of both promoting the local economy and also affordable housing, and housing in general is developing this, or adopting this darn zoning ordinance. I think that will provide a measure of stability, a measure of predictability for both property owners in Missoula and those seeking to provide opportunities of affordable housing or economic opportunities for folks. Some of the tools in there that might be utilized for creating affordable housing opportunities might be more small lot development. There's been a great deal of debate about accessory dwelling units, and some folks have been chagrined by my position on that, which split the difference a little and allowed ADUs in some areas of town, but maybe not necessarily everywhere where folks wanted. But that's a tool that could be used to that end. I think in terms of job development, better-paying jobs in Missoula, I would qualify my answer by saying we ought not to simply sell ourselves short on that and roll out the red carpet for anyone who wants to come here and set up shop. We need to maintain our quality of life with whatever sort of economic development we encourage. I've spoken with Larry Swanson over at the Center for the Rocky Mountain West, and I think one thing that we can do as a local municipal governing body that we haven't always done so well in the past is try to establish a consortium of interests in Missoula devoted to economic development, not simply sit back and create the infrastructure or hope that we build it and they will come, but take a more proactive role, and I think that would be one means to that end.
Marilyn Marler, I'm running for election in Ward Six, and thanks for this simple question here at the end of the program. Affordable housing and good jobs, they do go together. I think one of the things, I'll start with the housing first. I've always felt, since I've been on council and since I've lived in Missoula, that it is good for the city to encourage development on small lots. We need a variety of kinds of houses because people, different people need different things out of their house. We need single-family homes, we need townhouses, we need condos, and we need tools that allow builders to build those so people can buy what they can afford. And towards that end, I think something that would really help would be for city council to pass a functional zoning code. Just saying, that's something that we can do to really help. And something else that I'd like to do on, towards affordable housing is to continue to be open with the building community, the realtors' community, and people on the board of the housing authority. I think all those folks have a lot more expertise than I do in some of these issues, and I like talking with those people about what they see the solutions to be. Again, the flip side of affordable housing is good jobs, so we need to continue to promote jobs here in Missoula, and I think the, really, the best thing the city council can do is continue to keep Missoula a wonderful place to live. Let's face it, we have problems, but it's still a pretty great place to live. We need to make sure that we take care of our infrastructure so it doesn't just crumble. We need to make sure that we continue to have a vibrant community with the arts. We're lucky to have the University of Montana here. And something that really defines Missoula is our wonderful parks and natural areas, and these are all things that the city needs to take care of to continue to attract businesses. I completely agree with Dave Strohmeier that we shouldn't be, you know, selling ourselves out just to attract any business here. And similar to my housing answer, I would like to continue to be open with the business community. We do have a Missoula Area Economic Development Corporation. We have a very active downtown business association who work really hard, and I really enjoy when those folks come down to city council and help us.
Mike O'Heron, candidate for Ward Five. Thanks again, and these are good questions. People more informed than me can probably formulate solutions on the high cost of housing. At its most basic, we have to either increase the supply or reduce the demand for houses. That's what's going to affect the cost. And increasing the supply can be in the form of infill, or it can be the form of expanding the urban center on the fringes, and it's probably going to be a combination of both. It seems to be the way it's going now. As far as bringing more jobs to Missoula, and maybe the questioner didn't exactly intend to say it that way, but there are going to be more jobs in Missoula if we continue to grow. The question is, what type of jobs do we want in Missoula? And I think we should, again, brainstorm on those things and look forward 10 years or 15 or 20 years and picture us looking back and saying, you know, what did we put in place to encourage certain industries, certain professions, certain types of consultancies so that we build something that we actually want to be here as far as the local economy and local businesses? For instance, there's been mention a few times tonight about the green industry, and, you know, we could encourage the growth of green consultancies, green manufacturing, things like that, and start things here in Missoula, encourage them through incentives and removing disincentives for that type of a business. So we have to become people with more vision and look forward, not just the council members and the mayor and community leaders, but the people who live here, look forward and say, what do I want the city to look like? And as far as the economy, what kind of jobs do we want to have here? I like Forest Products jobs, and they're struggling right now. Those industries, the industry's struggling very much right now, but I think it's a very healthy thing to have in our area. And the other thing I would mention is there's, the information technology or computer world is going to continue to grow and boom for decades, and we could be a center of excellence for- for computer technology. And right now, the way I understand it, and I'm not very informed on this yet, but a friend that's in the industry is telling me that Bozeman is way ahead of Missoula on the computer businesses. And it's something we can think about. It doesn't mean I'm a big fan of doing that yet, but I think it should be part of the brainstorming. I think that's all I have for now. Thanks.
Okay, Bob Jaffe, Ward Three. Starting with housing, there's really only a couple of things that can be done for affordable housing. There's increasing supply or there's subsidy. It's really, those are the elements. Missoula is, does an excellent job at the, on the subsidy side. We have numerous programs, we bring in tons of grant money, we, we have very well-established nonprofits. I think we have that side of the equation pretty well established. The place where city council can, can do more work is in the, on the side of increasing the inventory of essentially lower cost houses so, so that, which generally means smaller homes on smaller lots. So steering our policy, our regulations to support the development of more small lot homes is probably the number one thing we can do to try to work on the whole supply-demand side of the equation. As far as the jobs picture, this is another thing that's a, it's really a group effort here, that we've got a number of excellent organizations in the community that focus on, on the issues of, you know, pure economic development kind of issues, the MAEDC and FCDC and the Downtown Association, and we've got a whole bunch of groups that that's their thing. And the city council's role and the city's role is, I, I see really our focus needs to be on, one, developing infrastructure and, two, increasing municipal scale amenities, you know, providing those like the pools and the skate park and, you know, the things, things along those lines that the good jobs in today's economy can go wherever they want to go. They, and where they land is in the places that are nice to live. And that's what we can really do as, as a city is promoting the projects that make Missoula a nice place to live because the jobs generally follow where, where people want to be. It's not, you know, the, the economy's different these days, it's not based off of where the trees are or something. Okay, so those are, those are the things I think we can do is in, in doing what we can to promote amenities and infrastructure and, and working with the organizations that, that focus on the, on the pure economic development work.
John Wilkins, Ward Four, and I guess I never have said, I am not looking for an endorsement, I'm just looking for support. So, and so is my opponent, by the way. Yeah. You know, I, two minutes is not enough time to even get on this subject, so I'm going to only touch on one little aspect of it. I think the city's got to be really careful on the fees they charge. Impact fees, permits for the fence, permit for this. We might be overdoing it and I'll give you one prime example. Bozeman, a friend of mine that runs Western Montana Mental Health Cleaning, built an 11-bed facility over in Bozeman, 8,000 square feet. The impact fees were $48,000. I hope Missoula don't get that crazy. And I know we need impact fees, I know we need money for our parks and our streets and our sewers and our maintenance, but you got to draw a line somewhere. If you start charging so much in impact fees, that brings the affordability of houses way up. The other thing I want to just briefly say, small lot developments, I don't think they're a bad idea, but you got to be careful there too. Because the smaller you make the lot, the more the lands worse surrounded. So you're driving up the price of the house just in that aspect. Prime examples, when planned neighborhood clusters in the, in the growth policy plan of 99 or 2000, when that came in, I actually saw ads in my area where a house that was actually so small that when you stepped in the front door, you were in the backyard. And the house was going for over $120,000 at that time. It was just because they could build again on the back lot. It increased, my estimate, it increased the value of my lot in my area by $40,000 when that was, started to be allowed to happen. So you got to be careful on small lot developments because it's going to increase the value of the land. Affordability, to me, it's economics. That's what controls it. If you really want affordable housing, you have to go to our Housing Authority, our nonprofits that do that. You got to be willing as a taxpayer to help subsidize that. And there's much more I could say on the whole subject, but I'm out of time. There's just not enough time to answer that question.
In regards to jobs, I think I'd just refer back to my platform statement earlier about how the healthcare and construction industries are the biggest private sector industries for Missoula and my goals for those. So I'll just answer the affordable housing question. And the, the one item, I believe the question was, for one item that I would push for is funding and, and bridge loan programs for the Missoula Housing Authority that actually allows them to do adequate funding, every, adequate housing development every year. And I think the, we could take money from the general, more money from the general fund and put it into the Housing Authority. That is why it's there and if we don't utilize it, we can't expect anyone else to follow. In terms of the bridge loans, I think the Housing Authority, like private developers, has, have, has difficulty getting the financing that they need. And if we can provide bridge loans to, for, to allow them to acquire the private lending that they eventually pay back to us, then we may see more options coming out from them as well. So that is the one thing I would do to improve affordable housing, to provide funding and loans for the Housing Authority.
Hi, Kathy Greathouse, Ward Six, candidate. Basically, I think that Missoula needs to look at, not only do we need white collar jobs and professional jobs, we have a lot of blue collar workers. We have to keep them in mind. And we can be very picky about who we bring, but then who's going to pay the taxes that we need to do, all the things that we need to do. I think it wouldn't hurt to possibly look at hiring somebody to go out and recruit the businesses and the industries that we would want here. As far as tax incentives, I don't think we need those. I mean, look where we live. If we market Missoula, I think we will bring business. But we do need a diversity. We, we just can't, you know, not everybody's got a college degree that they can work in a white collar job and, and I don't think that's where we want to be. As far as affordable housing goes, I think that our housing will be more affordable when we have more good paying jobs. We do have people who can afford the $200,000, $225 range, but we have lost a lot of the jobs that are, that people could buy those because the jobs are gone, whether it's the timber industry, the construction industry, it doesn't matter. The other thing is that we could look at is rehabilitating a lot of our existing small homes built in the 50s and 60s. It's green. All we need to do, get furnaces, windows, doors, help these people stay in those homes and make them energy efficient. And it would also put a lot of people back to work. Thank you.
Thank you, candidates. And I grant, I agree with Councilman Wilkins that the two minutes is not enough time to address those issues. I have two more questions for individual council candidates and then I have a really good combination to finalize this and get to the endorsement process. The first question is for Ryan Morton. What are you going to do about the sewer in the rattlesnake?
Well, since I'm not on council, I can't do a whole lot about the SID right now. Ryan Morton, Ward One, again. In terms of the rattlesnake and any neighborhood, I, one of the things that has been kind of a bother to me is that we collect sewer rates from people that don't use sewer and I would like to put that money into a universal's fund, service fund so that when it comes time to connect people to sewer, either because the SID has brought the main to their neighborhood or not, that they have, they can call upon that universal service fund. We use that for telecom utilities, we use that for electric utilities and there's no reason why we shouldn't use it for our sewer utility. So I think that's one thing we could do for the folks in the rattlesnake is to make that connection fee affordable because it's a, I think, I saw Steve King's analysis last night that it's a total of about $10,000 to each homeowner in, in the SID 544. So that's one thing I would look at. Then I would also look at, since the right-of-way that's used for sewer often coincides with the right-of-way that's used for other utilities, that those other utilities can be taxed for the right-of-way and that that can go to sewer development as well to lower the costs for people to connect because I do think sewer is an invaluable service and it should be not only affordable to the people that we're sending it out to, but it should be environmentally sound, up-to-date, replaced when it needs to. And I don't think it currently does that right now. So that's what I would do for the sewer in the rattlesnake, but also the greater Missoula area.
Thank you. Last individual question, Mr. O'Hara. Missoula is growing and growth imposes specific costs on the community. Sewer extensions, road maintenance and extensions, police and fire, for example. Should the new growth bear the majority of these costs or should the city overall pay for them?
I'd have to deconstruct that a little bit, but I'd say that the new growth should bear a higher percentage or a higher, you know, a higher percentage of the cost. But I, I think I'd have to take more time to really think about that one and kind of deconstruct it to see exactly how, how it would work, but I, I, my, my hip pocket answer is that I think that the new growth should help pay, definitely pay its own way, which doesn't always happen. So absolutely, it should pay its own way, its own share, if, if, even if it's an equal share of the burden of the new services. But potentially, I'd, I'd at least consider, because it's, we're maximizing the, the ability of the land to support people, I think it's possible that we could reasonably allow the new growth to pay a higher percentage. But again, I'd really like to deconstruct that and look at it. But at, at a minimum, it should pay its equal share.
Thank you. All right. One last question. This is for all candidates and it has to do with endorsement process. I'm going to combine them together. First of all, question for everyone. What would receiving the endorsement of this organization, the Missoula County Democrats, portray about you to the people in your ward? Also, to the candidates not seeking endorsements, which are Ryan Morton, Mike O'Hara, Kathy Greathouse and John Wilkins. If you were endorsed by the Dems, how would you use that endorsement? So Kathy, if you'd like to go first, I can repeat the question if you'd like.
I didn't come to pursue an endorsement because, you know, I was under the understanding that it is not a party election. I would not be disappointed if the Democratic Party would choose to endorse. I've been a registered Democrat for 25, 26 years now. I do, most of my decisions are based on the people running more than the party platform and that's it.
Ryan Morton, Ward One, not seeking an endorsement. I'm also a Democrat and I support, I have supported every open space bond and school bond, so on and so forth. I'm not seeking an endorsement from anyone because, again, I, I agree with Kathy, it's a nonpartisan election and, and to make it partisan increases polarization on council and I'd like to see that go away. If I did get an endorsement, there's not a whole lot I could do with it because I signed an affidavit saying I would spend zero dollars, so I would have no endorsement ads to put out there. So I probably wouldn't do a whole lot with it because my hands are kind of tied at this point. But I'm not, I'm not adverse to it, but I'm not seeking it and I'm just happy to meet and greet you and I'll probably show up to your barbecue tomorrow and you can spend some more time chatting with me then. Anyway, thank you all for your time. I've enjoyed speaking to all of you and hearing the other candidates' answers. Thank you.
John Wilkins, Ward Four. I, I'm not seeking an endorsement just particularly because it's supposed to be nonpartisan and I believe that that's what the voters by an overwhelming majority voted for and that's why I'm not speaking, or not seeking endorsement. But I'd like your support. I've been a Democrat all my life. I am 61 years old and I think when I got slapped on the behind, I was a Democrat right I've been a union man for about 22 years, well, actually longer. I worked union for 22 years. I'm still basically a union man and supported the Democrat cause. I've worked in different elections for different candidates. Vicky Cotrelli, I worked with her. In fact, I guess I was her poster child on one of her forums for a while and with other Democrats. I've been to the legislative many times body, testifying on different bills that we all supported back in the day. So I don't know what more I can say about that, but that's what I am and whether I get support or not, I'll still be a Democrat, so. And, and by the way, people call me conservative. I don't label myself anything conservative. I think economics is making me conservative right now and it's economic time troubles and what we're going through, but I don't really label myself as any kind of a Democrat. It's an old-time Democrat.
I think the endorsement is, is pretty important, actually. The, you know, like it or not, people's, people, when, in a campaign, you know, a lot of times they don't, they don't dig too deep into, into the issues and it's, they want to just see, well, are you here or are you there? And, and it's, it's, it definitely oversimplifies things, but all the same, it's, it's kind of the reality. So I think it's, in general, you know, my positions generally align with the Democratic Party and, and that means something as opposed to, you know, people whose positions generally align with the Republican Party. Those, those mean different things. And when folks are taking a very brief look at who are the candidates, that's meaningful and I'd like to have the endorsement because I think it accurately represents who I am.
Mike O'Hara, candidate for Ward Five. I'm not sure what I would do, I, I'm not sure yet what I would do with the endorsement, if I would formally publish it or not. I would really like it if I got endorsed by both the Democrats and the Republicans because I, I really feel I'm an independent and that would, that would show that people from, kind of both, both parties recognize that I have strengths that I would bring to the city council as an independent representative. But I'm honestly not sure yet what I'd do with it as far as formally publishing it and, again, I'd appreciate it just like I would any other reasonably sane group of people. If they want to endorse me, I would appreciate their endorsement, so, thank you.
Marilyn Marler, and I am seeking the endorsement and it's true that the city council elections are nonpartisan, but for better or for worse, people, everybody knows everybody's party affiliation and I, I think that having the endorsement of the Democrats would help me communicate to voters in Ward Six just about my belief system and some, some major issues. If, if I know that somebody is endorsed by Democrats, I can assume that, well, not assume, but I, I do assume that they're pro-labor, pro-conservation, they support programs for less fortunate people. There's just a package of ideals that goes along with being a Democrat that I'm proud to be associated with. And, and at the same time, a lot of the work that I've been involved with on city council for the last three and a half years, it, it doesn't really come down along party lines and, and that's fine, but I'm, I'm still, would be glad to have the endorsement to help people understand what I'm all about.
Dave Strohmeier, Ward One. I too am seeking the concurrence of, of you all and your endorsement as Missoula County Democrats for my reelection, reelection bid. True, these posts, these seats that we fill are nonpartisan, but I do believe that it's for all intents and purposes a complete and utter fiction that our broader political ideals that may be connected to party affiliation have no bearing on, on local issues. Time and time again, I've found it to be the case that, that, that ideals of the Democratic Party or the Republican Party for that matter very much have relevance to how we make decisions here locally. Certainly, there are those areas where we can find unanimity and agreement that cut across party lines, but I think it does help inform voters where we're generally coming from on a wide range of issues that may or may not be local, they might be national, but nevertheless, I think it's one more thing to help voters understand who we are as candidates.
Roy Hausman, candidate for Ward Two.
Roy Hausman, candidate for Ward Two. Yes, I'm seeking the endorsement and I, well, I was alternate state committeeman for the Democratic Party. I was just recently elected and I just recently resigned that seat because I'm running. I'm also a precinct captain in precinct 90. That being said, I support the Democratic idea, Democrats' ideas and their support, if I can get their support and their help along this process, yeah. Knowing that it is a nonpartisan election, but it seems like everyone's willing to give out their endorsements and everyone seems to pick sides and they have the tendency to pick sides based on a party line. I'd like to obviously extend my hand out and say that it's not going to be waiting in the back room for some sort of Democrat to come out and hand me some sort of, this is your agenda and this is the way you follow it. I am, I am my own man and that's, it's a pretty simple way to do it. And I think the Democrats feel very strongly that way, too. And thank you.
Thank you, candidates. And thank you, audience, for the questions. Much appreciated. We'll be moving into the endorsement process next. We'll be considering them by secret ballot, which there's copies of the ballot that will be passed out to the audience. I understand that John Quaint, is that how you say that gentleman's name? He will be attending a September meeting to talk to us about that. And I see on this ballot here that it has Ms. Greathouse as declining the endorsement. Kathy, you're not necessarily declining an endorsement, are you? You're not asking for it. So when you get the secret ballot, maybe look at that a little bit, that Kathy not necessarily has declined, but we can still consider it for voting. On the ballots, voters may endorse, may decline to endorse incompleteness, like no endorsement at all, endorse only one candidate or endorse both candidates. We're going to be discussing the endorsements and as candidates, you're welcome to stay for the discussion or you're welcome to go also if you'd like to. We'll have 10 minutes to speak on each ward and speeches are limited to one minute each. And again, you are invited to stay or go if you'd like. So does anyone have any comments or questions amongst the audience here So if you're not a precinct committeeman or woman or a member of the E-Board, you may look at the ballot, but you may not vote it. Jim?
Absolutely.